Call the meeting to order for the Norfolk School Committee on Tuesday, Feb. 10th. February 10th, I don't know what date I just tried to pronounce. At 7:00 PM. As we start off every meeting, I will read the mission statement. Norfolk Public Schools offers a safe, joyful, and challenging learning environment that meets the needs of our diverse students. Through school, family, and community partnerships, we provide an education that inspires lifelong learners and cultivates caring and productive citizens of our ever-changing world. Roll call?
Jeff Chalmers.
Jeff Curry.
Paul Cochran.
Mark Flaherty.
Thomas Doyle.
Ingrid Larney.
All right. Let's see. Any public comment?
Any public?
No public? Still shoveling.
Any public?
Yes, public currently in a snowbank, so we'll pass this one. Let's see, moving on, correspondence. We received a letter, and then we also have a donation. The letter, I'm sure everybody's read, is following up from last meeting, basically, from a parent in town, Michelle Wilson, expressing interest for the full-day kindergarten with no tuition. So again, I think we talked about that a fair amount last meeting, so I think we're pretty well aware of whatever is positioned in town. And then, as we also noted, that is something we're actively working for budget-wise to make happen, so hopefully we can make Michelle Wilson and others happy by result of that. See what we can do. So we appreciate the letter. Always nice to get some correspondence. Secondly, we have a donation. Let's see, what do we got here? A few donations. Two from the Norfolk TPA. One donation, the amount of $1,252.87, is for teacher grants, and it breaks down for a combination of books, MARC buses, new science material, and then Scholastic News Magazine. That was for Freeman Kennedy. And then we have a second one from the Norfolk TPA, $583, also for teacher grants. $300 for Book Walkway. $100 for Handwriting Without Tears licenses, and $183 for some exercise balls. So do we have a motion to, I think we just do one motion, to accept these in total?
Make a motion to accept the school gift runs from the TPA.
Second it.
For those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, much passes. All right. Moving along to my portion of the events. Memo in here from Ingrid regarding the district determined measures. DDM, for those keeping track at home. So Ingrid and Holly Merritt have been working through this process. Actually, you want to give more of the background?
Sure, I can give the background. So the new regulations for the teacher eval system require districts to identify what they're calling district determined measures, which are assessments that will be used to evaluate teachers' impact on students. There's a requirement that we have two district determined measures for every educator, and in grades where MCAS is administered, then the student growth scores are required to be one of the DDMs. The Department of Ed has encouraged districts to form a district determined measure committee, and we've done that in Norfolk. We have about 15 members on our committee. It is co-chaired between Holly Merritt, the TPA president, and myself, and we have really worked hard. I would credit the educators for, they've worked really hard to develop and calibrate and bring forward high-quality assessments. The committee has vetted those. We've sent some back for revisions to make sure that they're fair and equitable and high-quality. We have, at this point, a tentative agreement on pretty much three DDMs for almost all of our educators, as a few related service providers, school psychologists, that it's a little bit harder to get a direct measure because they don't work directly with students for a large part of their role. So we're continuing to work on those. And at this point, we're pretty well ready. We have one final meeting. Hopefully, we will approve the final DDMs. We're really mostly looking at revisions at this point, and then we'll be ready to move forward with negotiating the contract language. So the districts are required to bargain the language that goes into the edeval portion of the teacher's contract. So we'll need two school committee members that are willing to be part of that negotiation. I did attach, for your review, some model language that the Mass Association for School Superintendents put out for language on the DDMs. The Norfolk 2PA is also putting forward a draft for us to have a starting point for negotiations.
So we need two school committee members on?
On the DDM negotiating.
I'd like to volunteer for that.
I guess it's easy enough. I was just trying to think, because I had previously done, I'd been part of all the various other collective bargaining.
Yeah, should it be aligned with that?
I don't know. I'm of two minds with that. I can understand there's a reason for consistency's sake to do that, but that being said, I don't, it doesn't preclude anyone else certainly from doing it, so.
The committee feels it's a better alignment to have you on there than me. I'm happy to give my spot to you or bow out.
Any, I guess it's not going to hurt my feelings. This is just with the?
I'm hoping it won't be that many meetings. Hopefully, we'll have it resolved pretty quickly. I think they'll put forward a proposal, you know, that we'll have to respond to. I think probably within two meetings, we should be able to tie it up. This will be part of the current contract that we've just adopted for the last three years, but it's really sort of a standalone section of the contract.
It's a separate agreement.
Yeah, it'd be a memo of agreement.
I don't think there's really any, right answer one way or the other. I mean, I think it's fine. I mean, if you guys want to do it, that's fine, and rather than not. I think it's also, if nothing else, it's good to have others that get a chance to work through this kind of thing, so then get to know the association membership and leadership and so on, so I think that would be good. So why don't we just do that? If you guys don't mind doing it, I'd appreciate that, so let's put it that way. Okay. Thank you.
Do we need to vote on that?
Uh, we, no, I don't think we do. Right?
I mean, you can take a pick, but I don't think we have to.
Um, yeah, I don't think we do. I mean, it's essentially volunteering for something, so I don't, I think it's just you being assigned, so I don't think there's actually a vote required for that, so.
Eventually, once the agreement's?
Yeah, because we'd have to vote on the actual agreement.
Yeah, you'd have to vote on the actual agreement once it's prepared and comes forward.
Right. So I think then we're fine with that, so. Okay, so again, thank you for that. Let's see, two quick other notes. I had a regional school committee chair meeting was supposed to take place sometime during one of the various blizzards. I don't know when. I think last week, maybe, so that got pushed off. We are now optimistically shooting for March 3rd. We're presuming the tundra has melted by then, and we'll be able to go forward, so that is scheduled as of March 3rd. So once that is completed, then our following meeting, discuss obviously the results of that, but that's where that stands. Jeff, it's March 3rd, right? Is it today? Because I know you were copied on the email.
Yeah, we've got, I mean, our last two meetings have been canceled, so we're not meeting until the budget meeting on the 24th.
Has not been ideal, certainly. And the last thing I had, I just want to give recognition, the town lost a pretty significant contributor to its, to the town recently, or just last week, Jack McFeely passing away. He was a former selectman for a number of years. His wife, obviously, is a school nurse here. He was also a town administrator of Rentham, I believe, for a long period of time, my neighbor. So I just wanted to, on behalf of the school committee, just pass along our condolences and recognize, obviously, someone who couldn't have done more for the town and the district towns, if you want to include Rentham in that as well. So just a very nice person by all accounts, and had done a lot certainly for the town, so just want to, again, just pass along our condolences to the family on behalf of the, of the school committee. That is actually all I have, so.
All right. I have several things for tonight. The first thing that I wanted to make the committee aware of is the current kindergarten enrollment for the 2015-2016 school year. Last year, we voted to move up the registration timeline for budget planning purposes. So we used to run registration in March, and we moved it up to January, so we'd have a better projected sense of enrollment. And much to our surprise, we were expecting enrollment around 100, based on birth rates and town census data, and at the time I wrote the memo to you, we had 114 children registered, and we're now up to 124.
Wow.
So that's quite a few more kids than we were expecting, and the net effect of that is we're going to have to add an additional kindergarten teacher. We were planning on five, if we, if we get the budget supported for full-day kindergarten, we were planning on running five full-day sessions. With 124 students, based on school committee policy of keeping class sizes around 21, we will definitely need to add a sixth teacher. At this point, I don't believe it'll have a significant budget impact because we have a position in the fifth grade that we were not planning to refill yet because of an enrollment decline in that, that incoming class. So we have a retirement, we had that additional position, we have some classes of 23 and 24 at that grade level, so we were reluctant to cut that position too early in case we get additional enrollment. But our plan right now would be to move that position down to the kindergarten to offset the need there, and we're going to have to monitor that fifth-grade enrollment really closely, because if we do get additional enrollment over the summer and those class sizes get above 24, we may have to look at adding staffing. Typically, we do not get large enrollment at the upper grades, but I just wanted the committee to be aware of the current status. Questions on K enrollment? Okay. The good news is, it seems like our enrollment projections are stabilizing a little bit, and that's, you know, we had 135 a year ago, we dropped to 100 this year, and we're back up in the mid-120s, so that's, that's a good thing for the long range. Next thing I had was, I just wanted to let the committee know. Several years ago, you adopted a curriculum review cycle. Every few years, we look comprehensively at all of our subject areas, math, English art, language arts, science, social studies, and as part of the review, we just take a look at best practices in the field, we look at student achievement data, we look at what the research says, we look at what other districts are doing, and we make recommendations on areas that we could possibly improve and new materials that we need to bring in. And you know, this year, we're in the process of undergoing a pretty comprehensive English Language Arts review. That committee will be coming forward with their recommendations to the committee in May. Another area that we are going to be looking at this year is, we're looking at our program of leveling in grade six. So currently, we level students for English Language Arts and for math instruction at the sixth grade only. That's been the practice at the Freeman Kennedy for several years, and we've actually had some, some good results with that, positive things in terms of, the intent of the program is that we have two teachers at the lower level, so kids get more individualized instruction, and that we're front-loading support for kids that need additional assistance, with the intent of helping them close the gap and be ready to move forward in a positive way in seventh grade. So that's the philosophy behind the program, and we have seen some good results in the data. However, just like any other curriculum subject, we do want to take a step back and take a look at that program and, and see if it still continues to meet the district needs, and we want to take a look at what other, again, what other districts are doing. So included in your packet, you see a outline from Lisa Altam Hickey of some of the areas that we're going to be looking at as part of that review. In terms of, like I said, in any curriculum review, we always look at student achievement data, so with the philosophy that our intent is to front-load support for students that are struggling in mathematics and English Language Arts, we are going to take a look at whether the MCAS growth scores in those levels show greater growth from fifth to sixth grade with their leveling and with the additional support. So that's one area. We're also going to look at where our students are placed as they exit sixth grade and what their success is as they transition into King Philip. We also want to look comparatively at where our students score in fourth, fifth, and sixth grade with other comparison communities on the MCAS data that we have available. Some of the community data that we've also discussed looking at is, we want to take a look at some districts that are really high-performing in grade six math and ELA, and, and we're looking at identifying those districts, one, on their growth scores as well as their performance level. So some, some districts that have really accelerated the rate of student learning and growth are interesting in terms of what additional materials and what other programs and resources and supports they put in place. So we're going to identify high-performing districts in those two categories and do some interviewing to find out, how much time do they designate out of each daily schedule to ELA and math? So what, you know, what is the total time on learning for those subjects? Do they level at, what grade do they level in and what subjects? How do they involve parents in terms of getting input with regards to leveling? We also want to look at, is there anything else that they've done, you know, differently that they would attribute some of their success to, so that we can learn from other districts? And we're also going to be looking at some new research in the field and best practices on the impacts of leveling during the middle school years. The intent of that review, again, I think it's really critical, anytime we go into a curriculum review, that we go in with open mind. We're going to take a look at what the data says, what the research looks like, and try to cull that all together with a recommendation of how we think is the most effective way to move forward. And the committee will be planning to come back to a school committee probably in May. We need to create some time for teachers to gather this data and, and to really process it in a way that's meaningful. So we'll be coming back with additional information and recommendations, probably in May, as I said. The additional category, too, we've also talked about possibly collecting some parent feedback, and we thought it would make sense to survey maybe seventh and eighth grade parents, because they would have the perspective of having experienced the sixth-grade program as it was structured, but they'd also know what that meant for their students moving forward into the middle school years. So we talked about collecting some of that data as well.
Was there any discussion on adding sixth-grade or even fifth-grade parents? So as to add information on how their, just their thoughts and ideas around, as they were in the program, not necessarily a year after or two years after being in the program?
We can certainly talk about that. We were trying, we were talking about timelines, too, and how feasible it is to create multiple surveys and manage the data, but I can certainly share that back. I'm meeting with the team tomorrow, and we can talk about collecting some additional information.
I just got a question. Maybe, I know it's been discussed before. Refresh my memory on leveling. Is that just getting them to being at the sixth-grade level, or?
No, it means we're offering three different levels of English and three different levels of math at the sixth.
Oh, okay. All right.
Same curriculum?
Same curriculum, at different pace and different level of the district.
Okay. That makes, okay.
Any other questions on the, the program review? And I can share the, the question regarding additional, expanding the parent feedback.
Yeah, I think the parent feedback comment's a good one, because I think it goes with the communication piece as far as community involvement, so I think that's a good thing to emphasize, so. Hope that's worth it.
Okay, the next thing I had was around professional development programming, and, you know, there was a memo in your packet. I just wanted to highlight that, that we have really put a focus on increasing opportunities for professional development, based on the entry report that I provided several years ago. It was an area that the district had some gaps in. There hadn't been a lot offered from multiple people in, in ongoing professional development, and I think as a district, we're really committed to that, because we do know that the biggest impact on student achievement is the quality of teaching and learning that happens in the classroom. So high-performing districts, pretty universally, have a strong commitment to ongoing professional development. So we've developed a professional development committee, and we've been really looking at the long-range needs of the district. We've been looking at our strategic plan and curriculum initiatives and trying to call out where we need to provide additional support in, in professional development. Some of the things that we've been able to do, I think, are really exciting, and I wanted to highlight. For the last two years, we've offered, offered an onsite graduate-level course that we've hired a consultant that we brought in to teach it on data coaching, which would be methods for analyzing student learning data, identifying learning problems in the data, being able to monitor and evaluate the quality of curriculum from a data perspective. And we've opened that course to Rentham and Plainville. We've got almost 40 of our staff members that have completed that course at this point, which is really exciting. Last year, we offered a shared course in, again, a graduate-level course onsite at the Freeman Kennedy in literacy instruction. That was co-taught by Kelly Whitmore, our assistant principal here, and the reading specialist for the Plainville Public Schools. We offered also a two-day content course in teaching mathematics in the primary grades, and this year, this summer, we're going to be offering five courses shared between Rentham, Plainville, and Norfolk. That'll be open to all teachers and special educators, so we're continuing to grow that. We've offered a lot of onsite professional development this year to support teachers in implementing the new FOS program, which is our new science curriculum. And also, we offered and expanded our professional development. We provided training for our substitute teachers and for our staff and for our new cafeteria monitors and behavior management, and working with students, and in utilizing SMARTboard technology. On top of the different things that we have been offering, we do have a lot of mandated required trainings that we have to provide annually. We have to provide training in civil rights and harassment. We have to provide training in physical restraint. We have to, a new requirement that we have to provide a minimum of two hours of suicide prevention and intervention training to all educators every couple of years. We have to provide regular emergency response training. So our building principals, I think, do an outstanding job of really using all of their staff meeting time and any available grade-level team meeting time for professional development purposes. Business matters are really routinely handled through email, through, you know, staff updates that way, but we really use all available time. And, you know, I think one of the things that, the reason I wanted to highlight this is, one of the next items on the agenda is voting the next year's calendar. And in recognition of this, our, our recommendation is that we add two half-professional development days to next year's calendar to allow us to do. We have a new ELA implementation that we'll be launching next year. We have significant needs around creating time for teachers to meet as data teams, looking at designing interventions, planning enrichment activities, looking at student needs, and we need to create time for that. In order to do it, to do it this year, we've been pulling teachers out of the classroom and, and hiring subs so that we could get small groups together. It's not the best way to provide professional development, it's not as efficient. And when you look at the amount of professional development time you have in the Norfolk calendar compared to other districts, we're significantly lower. There's still many districts in the Commonwealth that have, like Wellesley has every Wednesday as an early release day for professional development. Lincoln is every, or Lincoln's every Wednesday, Wellesley's every other. So there's a lot of districts that make that continued commitment and have a lot greater opportunity, and we think it's really critical to, to keeping a high-quality instructional program in place.
Using those two towns as an example, do they have the same half-day and holiday schedule that we do?
Yeah, they do. They still have parent conferences, they still have early release for Thanksgiving, and they do have the school vacations. So yes, they do have that. And there's a lot of other districts, too, that have additional days, like when I was in Foxborough, the teachers have 185-day contracts, so they have two additional full professional development days in the calendar year, and we weren't able to support that in the negotiations and the budget. So, you know, we, we're behind in many, many different ways with that.
Yeah, Westwood does every other Wednesday.
Yeah, a lot of districts do, half-day every other week.
Since we're, since we're talking about the calendar, does it, does it make sense to talk about strategies to deal with winters like this?
We're going to, yes, we are. We actually are ahead of most districts, because we did have an early start. So right now, with the snow days that we've had, our projected last day is Wednesday, the 24th. So we still have two more days in that week that, if we needed to, we could have, and we can actually go to June 30th, so you really have four more days available. I was going to talk about it after the calendar, but since you raised it, we, you know, I think that the committee should be thinking at this point, and I don't think we should discuss it tonight, but put it on the agenda for March. If we have additional closing days between now and then, we could look at making Good Friday a half-day for students. We also have a professional development day in May that's a full day. We could look at making that a half-day for students, and those changes to the calendar would buy us an additional two days. So I don't think it's worth doing at this point. If we have no further snow days ending on Wednesday, makes sense, but if it were, if we have two or three more and it's pushing us into that week of June 30th, we might want to consider those two options. But for next year's calendar, our recommendation is starting before Labor Day for students. Labor Day is really late next year. It's, it's September 7th, so districts that would start after Labor Day, starting September 8th, with snow days, you'd be already at the end of June, so it really doesn't build you any flexibility. So we're recommending a, before Labor Day start, we're recommending Monday, August 31st be the first day for teachers, and that students would start Tuesday, September 1st, and they would come Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday. The Friday would be a holiday for the long weekend, so we would be open Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday. That's what KP's calendar looks like, so they won't be open on Friday either, so for parents and planning purposes, I think that makes sense. We would recommend a half-professional development day in September. We had the same date this year, and that would really be, we want to have an early opportunity, again, to provide training and support for teachers for the new ELA implementation, so we want to do that sometime early in the year. We are recommending the full professional development day in October, which is consistent with what, with this year's calendar. It would be the Tuesday after the Columbus Day weekend. We found for families that pairing it up to a long weekend makes sense. It makes it easier for people. We did work with Plainville and Rentham to try to have some common professional development days, so they are hoping to keep that Tuesday as a professional development day for their staff, and also January 19th as a professional development day for their staff. And that gives us the advantage of bringing in presenters that we can share PD between the three districts, so share cost and provide professional development, especially for some of our small groups like the art department or music department, where in Norfolk, we only have two teachers. If we can share professional development broadly, we have a bigger network there. The calendar in November, we would have the parent conferences the same week, so the November calendar really looks identical to what it looked like this year. December, we're recommending one early-release professional development day, December 9th. The January calendar looks pretty much identical, except the, the professional development day on the 19th. This year is a half-day. We're recommending that be the full day, and we're recommending the half-day be in May, so that we could share PD with the other two districts. So February vacation's the same. An early release in March. We've tried to distribute and balance them out throughout the terms. The change that you'll see would be that we're suggesting parent conferences move from the first week. It would have been, on last year's calendar, it would have been the 8th and 10th of March. We're recommending moving those to April. The reason behind that is, we've tried to balance out the number of days in each term, and it makes sense to have parent conferences after report cards are issued, so that parents have a chance to review the report card and can come to the conference prepared with questions. So report cards will go out the 24th of March, and then we'd recommend parent conferences be the following week. We can't have them the last week of March, because that's student MCAS testing, so we can't have early-release days then.
So the conferences would be April 4th, the week of April 3rd?
April 5th and 7th in the, in next year's calendar, so they'd be the week after MCAS testing. The report cards would go home Thursday, the 24th. Fri, the 25th is Good Friday, so they would go home about a week and a half before the conferences. And then?
Conferences are held on early-release days.
Yes. Yep, they do one afternoon and one evening. And then the last day of school would be June 17th. The five snow days would be the 20th through the 24th.
How many snow days are actually built in? Like, how many days can the kids miss before they have to start making them up?
None. They have to make up every snow day, but we build five into the calendar.
We build five in, okay.
So, and we put them on the end, so you'll see the shaded 20th to the 25th are our five projected snow days.
Okay.
But they have to make up, they have to attend 180 days of school.
Okay.
Any questions, comments, thoughts on the calendar? We brought this forward, usually, we vote the calendar in March or April, but we've had a lot of calls actually in the office about whether or not we were opening before Labor Day, because camps end the end of August, and parents are trying to decide, should I plan a vacation then, because there's no childcare available? So the sooner we can get that date out, I think it would help our families in terms of planning.
I think this is good, and we can definitely look into doing more, adding in more half-days later, but?
This one has the additional two that I recommended in the draft.
Yeah, like with the other districts that are doing every other week, but before we would go and do something like that, I would definitely say we should get some feedback from parents, because, you know, some of the young kids, you gotta, you know, parents work, you gotta get childcare, but, yeah. I think this works for now.
Our SAC program does offer an extended day on any day we have early release, so, so that is available to families that participate in SAC, but yes, I agree. Are there questions, thoughts, comments?
Any questions on this? No. All right, so we need to vote on the calendar. Do we have a motion?
I'm making a motion that we approve the calendar as presented.
Second?
Well, second.
Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That's all I had for tonight.
All right, so. Let's see. Moving on, Jeff, I think you asked a question, there hasn't been King Philip, so. Go say it. That was a quick report. Very good. Good job.
The budget hearing had to be rescheduled again. I didn't see the date.
24th.
The 24th, okay, because they have to post it two weeks in advance for a public hearing, so that's where the problem, they have to keep pushing it out. hearing, so that's where the problem, they have to keep pushing it out. It's been really tough for them.
Policy Subcommittee, Mark or Jeff?
I wasn't here for the last one, so Jeff, if you want to take that.
We're prepared for these readings. No changes. We didn't meet tonight, so.
Yeah, as far, we have first readings for student absences and excuses and student complaints and grievances, but.
And we canceled tonight, so we'll meet again. We're working on the domestic policy.
Budget Subcommittee, Paul, you want to do that one?
Sure. We're currently reviewing the preliminary FY fifteen, sixteen budget. We're looking at a facility, an updated facilities model, which looks at the state of equipment and infrastructure. We're also looking at a printer replacement strategy, I versus lease, and we have the draft presentation in March, so that's the state of the budget. On track.
All right. Anything with technology, Jeff?
Nothing new. The next meeting's Thursday.
You say Thursday?
Thursday.
All right. Moving on to new business. My, excuse me. We have some, let's see, two renewals for partnerships. The parent-teacher organization would like to continue to be affiliated with the school, so that seems like a nice idea. So, I guess we're just, the motion for that one?
Is this the new form or did they, this looks different?
That's correct, isn't it?
You know what I'm saying? It looks different than the other one, than the seven, ten, and eleven look different, and they're both for renewals. See what I'm saying?
Mark is correct.
I think they have some older ones, but they've attached.
AJ, I think the PTO one is the older one, correct?
It is, but they've attached.
But they've attached the rest of it?
All the required information and the additional, the description of the organization they've attached.
Yes, they've got all the stuff.
And it has their grants and.
Okay, so, yes, they've got everything, just slightly revised format, so.
So, do we have a motion to accept or the renewal of the PTO?
So, moved.
Second?
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. And then we've got another one for the renewal for the Norfolk Community League. A little motion on that one?
I make a motion that we accept Norfolk Community League.
A second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Could I miss?
The readings of the policies, they were in Subcommittee section.
Oh, okay. All right, where is it? One second. We're going to double back to the actual readings of the, give us a second, we must do the first readings of those two policies. All right, School Committee minutes. Everybody have a chance to review those? Any changes? They did not note any? Motion to accept the minutes?
Make a motion to accept the minutes?
Second?
I'll second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
And then, okay, so we got four, and then one recues, and then as far as for date of the next, our next meeting is proposed to be March tenth. Does that work for everyone?
March ten.
Yeah, that works for me.
Yep.
Okay.
Yes. Are we all right?
Yes, that works.
Okay. All right, so March tenth works. And then before we adjourn, if we could just, I said revisiting the Policy Subcommittee, if everybody just wants to kind of do the first reading on those two policies we mentioned, the absences and excuses and the complaint, student complaints and grievances.
Number, on the student absences and excuses, number four reads for observance of major religious holidays. Do we need to have major in there? How do you define major religious holiday?
Then you open a separate thing, then you add minor to it, then you can be.
I'll have to make that chart. Bring that back to the policy clerk.
I would even go so far to say the same about number two, serious illness. I'm just asking for the, if it's necessary to have that type of qualifier on it.
Yeah, I can see the intent of it, but.
Yeah, right.
Because student illness is covered in the top one.
Top one.
Maybe that we need to define these a little closer. And I don't know that we can leave it fully open-ended, but.
Yeah.
We'll see if we can. What's that?
You didn't know if you could fully.
If we can leave it open-ended.
Right. I mean.
Because there are minor.
There have to be some, some restrictions in there.
Yeah.
But.
But we can look at both those and come back with a recommendation.
Exactly.
Yeah.
At least we have quarantine in there, so if the kids are quarantined, we don't have to let them come in.
Did anything change student complaints and grievances?
Both of these policies are impacted a little bit by the passing of the new Student Discipline Law that went through over the summer. So, there are a few additional requirements that we've had to add to our policies that reflect that. So, in the student absences and excuses, there's an additional requirement for contacting parents and holding meetings if students are out more than five days and developing a plan. That's that's driven by the legislation, so that's an additional.
Does the statute address, and it's asked a false question as far as, does it have any major religious holidays or serious illness challenges against that?
I'd have to go back. It's not, it's, that wasn't impacted by the new legislation.
Okay.
So, that is in our current policy. The things that were changed are really around the new legislation, so I'll have to go back. I'm not sure what the.
Yeah, I'd be curious if it's even in there at all or if they borrow from the language there and leave it.
Guidelines are there.
Okay.
Can I make a recommendation? We look at the appropriate language relative to budding towns to see what they're using?
For which part?
Because some of the specifics have been questioned tonight.
The serious illness and major religious holiday piece?
It's an idea. I mean, if it's consistent, you know, why change it if it's not, and they have some language that might be a little bit stronger, a little bit tighter?
Yeah, we certainly can take a look. I would imagine their language is similar because this came from the Massachusetts Association of School Committees' model policy.
Which is why I'd question, I mean, some of the things are in there for a reason.
Yeah. We can certainly reach out and.
I mean, Paul's got some good points, but along the same lines, if there's some consistency, I'd almost want to keep the consistency.
All right. I think we're set, right? Since we had to go back and revisit that one, but we're all set, so meeting adjourned. Thank you.